Welcome back, everybody, resuming our regular session. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
And Councilmembers on?
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we have a commendation tonight to give to somebody very, very special and important to our staff. It's hard for me to read it. Really hard, actually. This person has just been an integral part of our council. She was a council member at one time, has gotten to know every person that you need to know in order to move policy forward. She is very well respected in Olympia and in the whole region. And if you think that Bellevue has done well politically, regionally, and nationally, it is because of this person working for our city. So this is for Joyce Nichols, doggone it. I've got to find the commendations in just a second. All right, here we go. Whereas Joyce Nichols has provided vital service to the city of Bellevue for 14 years, including serving as Director of Intergovernmental Relations since 2011. And whereas Joyce was already experienced in both communications and government relations when she arrived here, notably having managed one or the other or both functions at Weyerhauser, the Puget Sound Water Quality Authority, and the cities of Seattle and Shoreline. And whereas she started working for Bellevue in 2007 as Policy Advisor for the Utilities Department. And whereas during her tenure as Intergovernmental Relations Director, Joyce worked tirelessly with city, state, and federal elected officials to advance critical transportation projects such as East Link Light Rail and Interstate 405 and SR 520 corridor improvements, Bell Red Street system enhancements, and regional bicycle network upgrades. And whereas, in her role as Assistant City Manager, Joyce was trusted, a trusted advisor to the city manager and council, helping them formulate policy that supported Bellevue's years of sustained planned growth. Now therefore, I, Mayor Lynn Robinson, on behalf of the Bellevue City Council, do this 17th day of May in the year 2021, hereby commend Joyce Nichols for her professionalism, dedication, and longstanding service to the Bellevue community. And I know that there are a lot of people who would like to talk. And so who would like to begin? Shall we start with Councilmembers on? And then I'll just go in order. I'll call on you. Go ahead, Councilmembers on.
Sure. You know, Joyce, you've been so amazing to the city of Bellevue, 14 years of work, and I so appreciate all your efforts because the work that you do is not easy. In fact, I would think it's a little bit like herding cats, dogs, and all the species of just all of the ideas and trying to get everyone to come together towards finding solutions around policy. And no city can get the work done ourselves. And so the ability to work regionally and find common ground and solutions is just so key. And you've been instrumental in getting all of that done for the city of Bellevue. So thank you very much. And I wish you well in retirement, whatever you might be doing. Hopefully, you'll think of us periodically and sticky policy issues. And don't be a stranger and enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson?
Thanks. Wow. Yeah, I'm really, really disappointed to see Joyce leave the city, but I know that she's earned her retirement very well. And you know, boy, you've been here as long as I've been on the council and beyond. And I remember when Brad elevated you to Director, and I thought it was just such a great move because I knew you'd just excel in that role, and you have, whether it's making sure that council members are really well-staffed at committees. You know, we get stuff done regionally and look good regionally because of the staffing that the city provides. And Joyce was the head of that. And I know you did a lot of personal touches on to make sure that we were staffed well, making sure we went to Olympia and had, you know, good speaking notes and, you know, telling us who to talk to, what to talk to, has just been integral in making Bellevue as successful as it is and helping us succeed as a body in the state and regional level. So I mean, it's been said before me, but I just, I'm so sorry to see you go. You've been one of my, you know, most trusted advisors here at the city of Bellevue. And it's your very, very small and very fashionable shoes will be very difficult. So I wish you much travel across the world as the pandemic comes to an end and much joy and long, long years in retirement.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, this is, I agree with those comments. And I, having retired, and everybody goes through that, it's not, I don't feel, I'm not sorry you're retiring. I'm sorry you're leaving us in this, you know, position, but I'm really happy for you. And I know you're going to be doing other things and contributing. And you're still going to be a part of our community. And I think that's what's really important. I will miss a lot of things, including all the work on, you know, various committees and regional committees and just being able to sit down and talk to you and talk things out and get some advice because of all your wisdom and your experience and frankly, your approach to things. I mean, there's just that good connection that I will miss. And I'll miss the chocolate lemons. That's something I've missed quite a bit with this COVID, so I had to, you know, get the substitute. And I will never forget the calendars of the high heel shoes. And what's the movie there that was featured in? Anyhow, these personal things that make you more than just somebody who's a staff person telling us about this and that and working with us. But you're a real human being, and you've really contributed to this city. And I will miss you in this capacity, but I look forward to talking with you going on. So happy new trails to you, and we love you, and we'll all be in touch. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Joyce, I'm not sure I can add too much more onto what's already been said. We are all going to miss you. You've been such a pillar of this team. You really are. And I think it's going to be very challenging for us to find someone to fill your shoes. But I'm so excited for you and the road ahead and for your retirement and all the wonderful things that you're going to do and enjoy. And I hope that you won't be a stranger. And I too really miss your council, your incredible memory of past legislation and votes and regional issues and state issues. And again, you've just been such an asset to us as a council, but just for the city of Bellevue. You know, I really not only respect, but admire your service to this city and wish you all the best.
Thank you. Councilmember Barksdale?
Thank you, Mayor. So Joyce, so in the year or year and a half that I've been on council, and I think the moment when I saw what everyone was talking about was when we were going over the legislative agenda and just seeing how you worked with everybody to bring priorities and interests together into a shared platform. And so I really, really appreciated your approach to that and also had a chance to work closely with you on the Willamore project through the flood control district and really valued your guidance through that work as well. So just want to say thank you for the many years of contribution to the city. And you hope to stay in touch.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I hope you are leaving the best to the last to say what I can about Joyce. It's a sad thing to see her go, obviously. We're so used to her. And but at the same time, we're blessed. When she came to Bellevue, she brought a bundle, a bunch of experience and knowledge and ability to get things done. She's able to get things done with all council members and staffs. You know how tough it is to herd a bunch of loose cats, right? Making them to agree on something. And she's done that with not just us, but with the state legislatures, you know, with county, with all the other local officials. That's not easy. It's hard to just do one individual elected official, but to do consistently. And she knows how to make compromises. She knows how to work with people from all colors and stripes and philosophies and parties. And she was able to do it by finding common ground. And there's a lot of things we don't know that she defends ourselves, the city of Bellevue, against unfundamentalities. A lot of things she probably deflected before we even know it's going to happen. And when we have questions, we ask her. She has her experience and wisdom and her knowledge of what's going on to really help us. So this is invaluable. Really, we're going to miss you. But the most thing that I miss is the chocolate candies in your office. It's a good thing that I don't have an office in the city hall. Otherwise, you probably won't see any of that left anywhere. So we'll miss you, Joyce. But at the same time, you well deserve what's due to you. And so have a great, 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 short retirement. And I know you'll be back. Even if you don't, we'll be, you know. I've always been done. I serve on many regional committees and always depend on you giving me true advice and not getting me and the city into trouble. That's another thing. You keep us out of trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know our city manager, Mr. Miyake, would like to say something as well.
Thank you, Mayor. And Joyce, it's hard to believe that you're actually leaving us. I feel like I'm in a bad nightmare right now. I'm hoping to wake up to see you still here and you would be here. But just on behalf of the city's leadership team and the staff, you know, I'd just like to thank you for your many years of service with this city. You know, a lot has been said about Joyce and her work on the regional front, but she's also done a lot of work and really strategically crafting policy on many of the high priority issues that the city has faced. And on a more of a personal note, I want to thank Joyce on her wise counsel and support to me as the city manager, but also as a friend since our careers began together here with the city. So I'm going to miss you deeply, Joyce. And I know our paths will cross again in the future. But, you know, again, just thank you so much for your many years of service. And again, on the more personal note, your support of me. So thank you.
Joyce, from the entire city council, we thank you. And I'm looking forward to toasting your retirement with you. And you probably would like to say something. And if you do, you don't have to. But if you would, please, go ahead.
Well, at the bare minimum, I want to give you a legislative update. And once we're done with that, I can get into the business of saying thank you. Your words are very kind, and nobody ever does it by themselves. And I've had the good fortune to work with, over the years, many talented individuals in the public sector, the private sector. And it's always been a team. You know, you make relationships. And if you're lucky, those people kind of go at the same pace you do. And by the time you get to places where you can really have some influence, those people are there with you. And that's something that I have treasured. And I've always had great bosses, and Brad is among the very best of those. And the thing that I would like to say most is how much of a privilege it's been for me to work with you. Because what you do is mostly unseen. The real work is the effort you put into things, the time you spend thinking about your constituents and what's going to work for them. And I think all of you keep the public benefit at the front of what you do. And that's what makes my job worth doing, is that I know you're behind the scenes and in the front as well, doing the work of public policy that's really hard. And believe me, I understand your dedication. I was thinking the other day that if you serve a four-year term, you probably in packet material have read, you know, War and Peace like 20 times, just the work that you do. And a lot of it is unseen. And that's what I appreciate, is that you have always been there for me when I've needed your help figuring out the solution to something. And I won't forget that. I also think that public service is, you know, a real, real good thing to do. And I think good public servants like we have in Bellevue help make us more compassionate and help us understand the needs of the people in our community. And I applaud you for your service. And lastly, I'd like to say thank you to my husband and my family. They have gone many, many Monday nights, as have your families, with, you know, not much in the way of dinner and coming home late. And I really appreciate that Fred has always pushed me to be my best self. And the thing I will say about my boss, Brad Miyake, is that the test he gives us as staff is, let's make sure that we do the right things for the right reasons. And I think with leadership like that, there's no way Bellevue can go wrong with you guys at the helm and Brad. And I just want to, again, thank you for all the good memories that I'll have. And every Monday night, I pledge I will think of you. So and not be a stranger. And Councilmember Lee, I'm really hoping for a long retirement, not a short retirement.
All right. Thank you, Joyce. Okay, we have another proclamation this time. Councilmember Robertson, would you like to read the Public Works Week proclamation? Did you hear me okay?
Yeah, I did. I was trying to get my mute off. The commendation or the proclamation was over my screen, and then I couldn't get the mute off. All right. Proclamation for Public Works Week. Whereas, public works services provided in our community play an integral part in the day-to-day lives of our residents and businesses. And whereas, the COVID-19 crisis has resulted in a greater awareness of and appreciation for the essential services provided by Public Works personnel during this critical time. And whereas, many Public Works staff who cannot telecommute have adopted new work practices to ensure the health and safety of themselves and the wider community. And whereas, the support of residents and businesses is fundamental to the efficient operation of Public Works systems and functions, such as streets maintenance, traffic signals, the delivery of reliable and safe water, maintaining stormwater and wastewater structures, upkeep on public buildings and fleet management. And whereas, Bellevue's quality of life greatly depends upon these facilities and services and those who maintain them. And whereas, the effectiveness of planning, design, construction, and maintenance work is dependent upon the dedication and skill of Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and field staff. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, I do hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week in Bellevue and encourage all residents and civic organizations to recognize the contributions that Public Works staff make every day to our city's health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thank you. Okay, we have an amendment to the agenda. Deputy Mayor, do you have a motion for that?
I do. I move to approve the agenda, amended to add consideration of Resolution 9943 as Agenda Item Number 13A.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. So now we're on to approving the amended agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor of approving the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, so oral communication. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there is one speaker on our pre-registered list, and that is Matt Jack. Mr. Jack, can you hear me?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, council. I'm here on behalf of the Bellevue Downtown Association to comment on the Grand Connection Design Guidelines and Standards, programmed for your attention later in the agenda. Last Friday, BDA President Patrick Bannon sent you a letter outlining our feedback that we sent to the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago. If it's easily accessible, I encourage you to reference the letter while I share my remarks. The Grand Connection is a BDA priority. It's a subject our Land Use and Livability Committee has studied closely since the very beginning and will continue to track until the vision is completed. And the Design Guidelines and Standards is one subject that we've paid a lot of attention to going back to 2018. And we know that completing this project in the Grand Connection scope is a big step for Bellevue. In our letter, we have four key positions that I'd like to outline or to voice this evening. Number one, we support the update. Our members are very excited to see the Grand Connection move forward with these improvements that will enhance wayfinding, place-making, and gathering. Number two, we support the timing of this code amendment adoption this summer. Completing this work provides certainty on next steps for stakeholders and the city. And it also creates the bandwidth necessary to address some of those big-ticket land use initiatives like East Main, Wilberton, and the Grand Connection lid park feasibility study. Number three, we support the use of rooms in the code to help distinguish segments of the Grand Connection route. It reflects the Sequence One vision and allows property owners the creative flexibility to develop within their built environment. Please reference our letter for some additional notes regarding code suggestions, concerns, and clarity. And lastly, number four, we recommend the city explore approaches to completing the build-out of the Grand Connection vision. As you may be well aware of, completing the Grand Connection or segments of it requires private development. And not all properties along the Grand Connection are set to redevelop. And in fact, a lot of those buildings, they're big and they're beautiful, and they've got great plazas. So what is the incentive for a property to participate in the Grand Connection? And what does it mean when you have, you know, one or two properties right now using the code to implement new designs when you have old designs in place? So the BDA is more than happy and willing to work with the city to figure out this challenge. This is a fun challenge, to see how we can get the Grand Connection built out in a timely manner. So with that said, I really appreciate your attention this evening and your leadership on this issue. And enjoy your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jack. That is the end of our pre-registered list. I'd ask at this point if there is anyone connected to this meeting who would like to make oral communication to the council. Please use the raise hand function or star nine if you're connected with a phone. And Mayor, I don't see any additional hands. That would close the oral comms.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're on to the report of our city manager, Mr. Miyake.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson and council members. I have one item under the city manager's report this evening, and that has to do with a very generous donation to the city from the Amazon Corporation. And just by way of background, last year, Amazon made a million-dollar donation to the Human Services Fund, which helped out a significant number of individuals who were severely impacted by the pandemic. I'm very pleased to inform the council that Amazon has once again made a very generous donation in the tune of $1,439,000 to the city of Bellevue. $1 million of that which will go to our Human Services Fund. $289,000 of that will support six community identified neighborhood enhancement projects. And $150,000 that will go towards three parks improvement projects. Joining us this evening is Brian Huesman, who is the Vice President for Public Policy for Amazon for further comment on this matter. So Brian?
Yeah. Hi there. Thank you, City Manager Miyake and Mayor Robinson and Deputy Mayor Newenhouse and all the council members. As the city manager mentioned, I'm Brian Huesman, Vice President of Public Policy at Amazon. And I'm so pleased to be able to speak with you again, like I was able to do last September. And I want to thank you all for all your leadership and service that you've done for the city and the whole region over the past year. You know, since Amazon's announcement last year that we are creating 25,000 jobs in Bellevue, we've successfully broken ground and we started construction on our Bellevue 600 project. We're really excited by this project. It's going to have retail and park space and daycare facilities, and it will align with the city's Grand Connection vision. And many of the features in the project are inspired by what attracted Amazon to come to Bellevue in the first place. It's a great quality of life and a fantastic talent pool, a business-friendly environment, and a great amenities. And as the city manager mentioned, last year, we were able to make a $1 million donation to the Human Services Fund. And we were so impressed by how the funding was really thoughtfully allocated to over 40 nonprofit organizations. And those organizations provide, you know, very critical services to Bellevue families, especially during the pandemic. And we're also, we're very excited this year, recognizing that we're still in extraordinary times, and there's still many people, many of our neighbors that are in need. We're very pleased to be able to make over a $1.4 million donation to supplement the Human Services Fund and to support neighborhood and park projects in Bellevue. And as the city manager mentioned, you know, we think that neighborhood and park projects are incredibly important. You know, the need for outdoor recreation and opportunities for children and adults is more needed than ever as the past year has made us known. And balancing Bellevue's exciting growth while still maintaining the high quality of life, it's going to be a challenge. And we think it will require public-private partnerships like the one that Amazon in Bellevue has, and we're excited to work with you all on that. Just additionally, at Amazon, we believe that all people should have access to housing that they can afford. And we look forward to continuing to work with city and community leaders to preserve and build more affordable housing through Amazon's $2 billion Housing Equity Fund we announced earlier this year. And we also want to work with you to advocate on public policies that can provide and enable more affordable housing supply in Bellevue. So I want to thank you on behalf of Amazon for the time to speak on tonight's agenda. We want to be a true partner to you and to the city. We want to be a good neighbor. And if there's anything that we can ever do, please let me know. Please let my staff know. And we're so excited to be in Bellevue, and thank you again for the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huesman, on behalf of the entire council. Thank you. It's very exciting news. Mr. Miyake, is there anything else you need to report on?
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, study session items. We have two items. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce them?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Robinson and council member. The first study session topic is the recommended land use code amendment for Sequence One of the Grand Connection Guidelines and Standards. This was the topic that was just commented on by the BDA under oral communications. Just by way of background, the Grand Connection is a council priority, which is to implement a major place-making feature that connects Main and Bowery Bay Park through downtown Bellevue to the Wilberton area. Joining us this evening are Emile King, Assistant Director, Michael Austin, Senior Planner, Liz Stedt, our Land Use Director, Christine Galan, our Senior Planner. And also joining us is Chair of our Planning Commission, Radhika Malakkar. With that, I believe Mac is also with us here tonight, too. So I will turn it over to the Community Development Department to kick this off.
Thank you for the introduction, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and members of council. The staff team and Planning Commission, who've been working on the Grand Connection Design Guidelines and Standards, are very excited to introduce council to the recommended land use code amendment for Sequence One. We've reached a significant milestone tonight. Tonight, you'll hear about the robust stakeholder engagement Tonight, you'll hear about the robust stakeholder engagement and process that went into developing the guidelines, as well as the Planning Commission discussion that occurred in forming the recommendation being brought forward to council. Next slide, please. By way of introduction, I'd like to please offer some context for tonight's discussion. The Grand Connection is envisioned as one of the city's key place-making features and must-see amenities in Bellevue. As described in the council vision and framework plans, the Grand Connection is a key part of Bellevue being a livable city and supporting the economic development and mobility for residents, workers, and visitors. The overall Grand Connection, as shown on this graphic, will be implemented in phases. The design guidelines, which are the focus for tonight, dovetail nicely with other current and future implementation efforts. Complementing the design guidelines, implementation of the Grand Connection is well underway on a number of other fronts. For example, seed investment on the new northeast entry to downtown park that is part of the Grand Connection is under construction right now. Significant efforts also occurred both pre-COVID and in response to COVID to help enliven parts of the Grand Connection with outdoor dining and seating. Things to look forward to, our future work on the Grand Connection, including Sequence Two Design Guidelines and discussion of the Civic Center area in and around City Hall, as well as ideas for connecting downtown to the Wilberton area. I'd now like to please turn things over to Liz Stedt, the city's Land Use Director in Development Services, to continue with our presentation.
I don't hear anything.
Sorry about that. I thought I had unmuted, but I didn't. So I apologize. First of all, thank you for having us here, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and staff council members. We're really excited about this. This is putting into action a lot of hard work over a lot of years, and also a really great collaborative effort between the Community Development Department and Development Services Department. We have been working on this for years, as I've mentioned, and we've had some projects that are starting to use some of these guidelines, even prior to adoption, to help us along, which has been exciting. So Michael Austin will be showing you a little bit more about that as we move through this. One of the nicest things about these guidelines is they provide very clear direction for our applicants. And they also put these guidelines into the land use code. Right now, we have a separate seventy-six-page section with all of these major open space and pedestrian corridor guidelines. So we're going to roll it all into the code and make it a lot easier for our applicants and our community that works with us, and also for the planners that are enforcing these. The guidelines are helping us create the vision. The guidelines are generally not very static in nature. They do not have a lot of dimensional standards, but they're more about creating a vision. So you'll hear more about that as Michael continues his presentation. The direction we're looking for tonight is we are seeking council direction to prepare the LUCA for final action at a future meeting. Christina, can you go the next slide? We do have an agenda tonight, the Grand Connection Initiative. And then we are going to have the Planning Commission recommendation for you, and that will be Chair Malgavkar, who will come and speak with you in just one moment. Then we will, Michael and Christina will walk you through the Sequence One Guidelines and Standards for the Land Use Code Amendment. We'll talk a little bit about the outreach and engagement that we've had to date. And then we'll talk about the structure of the Land Use Code Amendment, and then we'll talk a little bit about what direction we need moving forward. So with that, I'm going to pass this on to your Chair Malgavkar, who's going to speak about the Planning Commission recommendation. Thank you.
Welcome, Chair Malgavkar.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Yes, so the Bellevue Planning Commission is pleased to provide our recommendation for the Grand Connection Sequence One Guidelines and Standard Land Use Code Amendment. The Planning Commission received two informational briefings for this LUCA on January twenty-second and June twenty-fourth in 2020, and then further reviewed the LUCA in two study sessions on March tenth and March twenty-fourth, as well as at the public hearing on April twenty-eighth before making this recommendation. The Planning Commission discussed and supported elements within this LUCA and related ideas for projects and activities along the Grand Connection route, including opportunities for acknowledging cultural sensitivities of the Bellevue community, universal design for access to and within the Grand Connection, additional thoughts for activation, raising awareness for the Grand Connection, and fostering a safe environment for all users. In particular, the Planning Commission discussed and expressed support for emphasizing cultural diversity with artistic elements such as acknowledgement of Japanese-American or indigenous histories, particularly given the racially diverse context of the Bellevue community. The commission also expressed desire to promote activation strategies such as a walk-run and increased promotion signage across the city to direct residents to the Grand Connection. After discussion, the Planning Commission found that the Grand Connection Sequence One LUCA meets the decision criteria of LUC twenty dot thirty J dot one thirty-five and is consistent with the comprehensive plan, enhances the public safety and welfare, and is not contrary to the best interest of the citizens and the property owners of the city of Bellevue. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended, with a vote of five to zero, with two commissioners absent, that the city council adopt the Grand Connection Sequence One Guidelines and Standards LUCA without modification. The recommendation has been included by staff in the Planning Commission resolution as Attachment A of your packet. With that, thanks for your time, and I will turn it back to staff, but we'll be available for questions at the end of the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chair Malgavkar, and good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Austin, and it's been my pleasure to help facilitate this process along with other departments and a very collaborative approach to the Grand Connection Sequence One Guidelines and Standards Land Use Code Amendment, which is the longest title that we all love to say over and over again on here. So just to establish a little bit of context of how this fits in, as Emile and Liz did note earlier, in the larger Grand Connection kind of scheme of things, this is kind of one slide just exemplifying that this is really just one little puzzle piece that fits into the complexity that is implementing the vision of the Grand Connection. So, you know, in 2017 and 2018, council did see the adoption of the Grand Connection Framework Plan, and that was split between both Sequence One in 2017 and Sequence Two in 2018. And what that vision did was it provided that kind of high-level guidance that we all see today and recognize in many different renderings and illustrations of what could be as a Grand Connection route kind of takes its place linking Main Bar Bay Park with East Rail. What we see below are some implementation strategies that help us get to that vision itself. Some are more regulatory in nature, some are more tactical in nature, some are focused on activation. And these design guidelines and standards are just one small piece of that larger puzzle on here. And this may not be the only LUCA that ever takes place for the Grand Connection. There may be many others. But at least right now, this is that puzzle piece that we do want to make sure we can have. As Liz mentioned, there are a number of active products in downtown alone that we've been able to collaborate with to make sure we can get these guidelines to work for both their projects and for any future products that are already taking shape on here. But just to highlight a few other elements, there's also downtown code, land use code amendments in general, which also contain some Grand Connection guidance. As many streets fall within that area, we also have updated wayfinding signage that maybe it's its own separate study. The downtown park entry that Emile mentioned, which is underway. Main Bar Bay Park, which of course is its own very exciting, very complex initiative. And then even the East Rail integration is its own very complex piece. So these design guideline standards just for Sequence One, which goes from old Bellevue up to the transit center, is just going to be one more kind of puzzle piece to this larger element. So the next slide, please. This is just to highlight that in a little bit more detail on here. And so we do recognize there's a lot of text on the screen, but just want to highlight a few things from here. So again, this land use code amendment or LUCA is really focused from old Bellevue at the intersection of Main Street and One Hundredth Avenue, up through downtown park, up Bellevue Way, and then over into what we all know today as the pedestrian corridor and along Northeast Sixth Street. And then Sequence One ends at the intersection of One Hundred and Tenth and Northeast Sixth Street on here. Everything further to the east of that, so as you move down into the City Hall, Main Bar Center area, is what we call the Civic Center site. And then, of course, as we know, there's this very potential for this I-405 LID concept. And then the Grand Connection does, of course, terminate at East Rail, which is this other very exciting initiative taking place. But all those elements are under the Sequence Two umbrella, as recognized by the 2018 Framework Plan for Sequence Two. And with it, as you can see, there's just a number of significant complexities and conversations that will also take place just within those areas. We also have the Wilberton and Land Use Code of Policy work that'll take place within the Wilberton area alone. So Civic Center, I-405, Wilberton, East Rail, all these different elements certainly drive a number of different conversations. But today, we are focused on the Sequence One part, which has its own set of complexities that we're very excited to have tackled over this process and very excited to talk about what are results of them through that extensive work. So the next slide identifies a few things about the objectives overall for this. One is, our general one is just implement the applicable elements of the Framework Plan for the Grand Connection and the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, or CPA. The other is just updating the pedestrian corridor and major public open space design guidelines and land use code to reflect the Grand Connection vision. Again, a very long title. We really love long titles, I guess. But this, as Liz said, is a seventy-six-page document, and that is a significant amount of text to go through for design teams, developers, and staff, in addition to the land use code guidelines that we also have, which are also significant. And then the most fun part of this whole experience really is removing any redundant guidelines and simplifying content where possible. We want to streamline review and this process in terms of what design teams, design staff have to kind of weed through and really get down to, what are those key elements that make the Grand Connection cohesive? What are the key elements that make every room that Christina will speak about along the Grand Connection feel a little bit unique? And how can we do it without making people look at seventy-six pages of text all through that meantime on here? And so the next slide identifies, just to recap and refresh on what design guidelines and what design standards are. It's a really fun element, a area to be working in, because it can be very interesting. They have to be tailored for every city, every agency, every place you're in. They're always going to be a little bit different because they have to be customized. But in general, they're typically thought of in three different ways. One is they're an implementation tool for the goals and the values of the comp plan. The other is that they do strive to promote design excellence in our community, and that's actually something that's really key is because they really go to really encourage design teams to go that extra mile in design process, which is very exciting. And then the last element is it just provides a great common set of language to allow for that dialogue between the public, the city, and developers for active and potential projects on here. And what's been really fantastic about this project in particular is we've done a lot of engagement and collaboration with active projects and design teams and staff internally to really make sure that that dialogue not only feels supported and cohesive, but it really works for everyone across all sides on these projects. So this slide just highlights just one example of where this kind of falls. So if there's an active project within downtown, along Sequence One, what parts of it do apply to the Grand Connection? And this is really important to look at because, as we all know, and as noted previously, again, this is that kind of puzzle piece that fits within that larger Grand Connection element. So some elements of the Grand Connection are implemented through changes to right-of-way standards. Some elements are implemented that focus on activation that Matt Jack talked about, and our friends at the BDA in general have really been such a great partner with in this process. And then in this case, with these design guidelines, there really are this very focused kind of strip of pedestrian space and that kind of relationship between the pedestrian zone that you see on the sidewalk and the architecture itself. So that is this kind of sliver. That's a really great area that these design guidelines are really tailored on. We also have downtown design guidelines that focus on the rest of the building and the site itself. This example's Bellevue 600, which we all are very familiar with and excited about. And we're really happy to actually kind of show this one as an example, because this is one product that we've actually done a lot of collaboration and testing on this language with. And we're actually going to see the kind of results of all that hard work as it goes under construction. So we're all very excited about that across all sides. The next slide identifies, you know, how do we actually get to where we are today on here? So in order to actually make this process really successful, we knew right away that it had to work both internally with our design review team members. It had to work externally with all the individuals who are interested in doing active projects along the Grand Connection on here. So in order to do so, at a time when we have thankfully been and continue to be very busy, we wanted to make sure that we are testing this throughout the entire duration of this update process with active projects. And luckily, we had a number of active projects to work on that language with and make sure that it is customized for everyone. The other element we wanted to make sure we were doing is communicating to our stakeholders and our friends, whether they're at the BDA, the Chamber, everyone to make sure that they're all aware that this was taking place. This was one part of that larger Grand Connection vision on there, and making sure that they also had opportunities to provide input. And then the other key element was towards the spring, actually, which was the focus groups. And that's that kind of green bar that you see below the pink one. And that's really the key element where we had done multiple iterations and drafts of this Grand Connection land use code. And this was the part to really fine-tune that language with multiple design teams all in one space on here. So in addition to just the overall kind of element of going throughout this process internally, we had to consider all of our stakeholders on the external side of things, whether they're in the design or the development community as equal partners in this process, and then really bring everyone together into those focus groups to make sure that the LUCA that we are presenting with you today really is the exemplification of all that hard work with everyone across multiple touchpoints, multiple projects on here. And now we are here today on May seventeenth, after our Planning Commission public hearing that just took place on April twenty-eighth. And we're looking forward to showing you some examples of what all that hard work has resulted in on here. So with this, I have the pleasure of turning it over to our team member Christina to speak to that more.
Thank you, Michael. So as Michael introduced, we're starting to talk about the schedule and the point where the Development Services team started to come in and collaborate most intensively with community development. And so the LUCA draft that we are going to be presenting today is informed by this outreach that Michael has explained, as well as the engagement with our Planning Commission. A bit more detail on our specific outreach and engagement methods. First, as a process for projects, we completed the requirements dictated there for noticing of our application and CIPA, as well as holding a public hearing with the Planning Commission. But we did go beyond those basic requirements in this case. We did look back to the engagement that informed the 2017 to 2018 Framework Plan, which structured, provided the structure for this LUCA. As Michael mentioned, we did ongoing testing with active projects moving through the development cycle to make sure that our proposals were grounded in reality. We conducted external focus groups with Grand Connection stakeholders to provide direct feedback on components of the LUCA and incorporate that into our draft. We had internal focus groups with our design review staff to get the perspective as well from the individuals who will actually be implementing these design guidelines and working with the design teams on the other side. We held briefings with the Bellevue Downtown Association Land Use and Livability Committee, as well as briefings with the Transportation Committing Commission and Parks Board briefings as well. So at this stage, we'll start to walk through some of the more specific components of the LUCA. And while we have additional conformance amendments, which I'll explain shortly, the core of the content here is going to be in this new section, 2025A175. And this section, as previously mentioned, will replace our previous pedestrian guidelines to provide a much more concise, usable, clear guidance to design teams. So we do have five sections. The first general section establishes some basic foundations to support the Grand Connection, general requirements, public access, open hours, that sort of thing. Section B, Grand Connection, defines what the Grand Connection is, where it is, how the review process works, basic maintenance. The Major Public Open Spaces section now describes what these major public open spaces are, where they will be within the Grand Connection as kind of key anchor points, what sort of design requirements are incorporated, and those kind of basics. Section D is where we get into some of the greatest substance. These will be guidelines and standards that apply throughout the Grand Connection to provide a cohesive identity. These will be guidelines and standards that apply throughout the Grand Connection to provide a cohesive identity. This gets into areas such as fixtures, seating, lighting, paving, the signature color, those specific elements that will provide some consistency throughout. And then finally, section E, Room Specific Guidance. Within sequence one, we have seven rooms, which are these specific locations that have slightly different character. So these will be guidance elements that will overlay on top of those guidelines and standards in section D to help provide some of that variation within this overall Grand Connection identity. So here we have a map showing those first seven rooms. And they are Old Bellevue, Downtown Park, Bellevue Way, Plaza Street, Compass Plaza, Garden Hill Climb and Transit Central. So that last section I mentioned has specific guidelines for each of these rooms reflecting their separate identities. But one important piece of context as we're viewing the guidance for these rooms is the use of diagrams in this Luca. And so here we have one example of a diagram from our Luca. And the intent with these is to show visually how these design guidelines and standards could be achieved to provide something representing the vision. But they're not intended to provide a specific design. They're intended to be suggestive and help provide that visual context. So here in the diagram, you see we have some specific design guidelines shown in simple diagrams with some blurbs explaining what they are to help provide that link to the guidance text. Then here we have another example of a diagram for the Transit Central Room. And as you can see, it shows fairly simply some potential major design elements identified, such as the artistic elements, pointing out the primary entries. Again, just to show an example of what we're getting at with the design guidelines, not intended to show exactly what the design must be, but to show an example. And so specifically, the intent that this is intended to portray is that Transit Central is the largest mobility hub in Bellevue and a portal to downtown. Human and vehicle activity converge here with a transit island flanked by wide concourses that support a lively and interesting pedestrian environment. So here in this diagram, we see one example of what a lively and interesting pedestrian environment could look like within the Grand Connection context. And so while this new section is certainly the largest substantial component of the Luca, we do have other amendments which have been included. These conformance amendments are intended to really effectively integrate this new section within the rest of the downtown code, primarily updating references to the previous pedestrian corridor, replacing them with the Grand Connection, but also reflecting kind of the the change in approach with the Grand Connection. So we have updating the right of way designations for a few streets within the Grand Connection. And also incorporating some general cleanups for clarity and to correct cross references. So now at this stage, I will invite Liz Sted back to take us through the end.
Thank you, Christina, and thank you, Council, for your attention to this matter today. We are seeking Council direction to prepare the Luca for final action of future meeting. At this point, I'd like to ask for any comments or questions.
Thank you. So we have staff and Chairman Goff Carr here for any answer for any questions. And Councilmember Barksdale, you are the liaison to the Planning Commission, so I'll let you go first. We'll go Robertson, Stokes, Newen House, Son, Lee, and then myself, Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor. First, just want to say thank you to the Commission for the deep thoughts and discussion on sequence one, and I support the recommendation. Also wanted to thanks staff for their engagement and the thoughtfulness around the rooms model. I really like that approach. And especially because I think it provides a rich and varied experience along the Grand Connection. So really excited about that. There were a couple of points that Chairman Goff Carr mentioned that I just wanted to amplify because they were outside the scope of the Planning Commission and were more of more policy focused. And that was around the cultural sensitivity and diversity. So just wanted to highlight that as a topic of discussion, maybe added on to this. And then the safety piece was raised by one of the Commissioners as it relates to, you know, we're in, we've had, you know, mass shootings and wanting to know how the space could account for that in some way. And so just wanted to make sure that to highlight those parts that were more council focused, maybe as part of the discussion.
So Councilmember Barksdale, are you saying that you want to amend this to include the diversity and safety? Or is it in there enough? Or what's what are you saying?
So I don't know. I think it was broader than just this work. So I think it may be something to come back separate from this, so not amending. But I didn't know if if anyone had thoughts that they wanted to share now, maybe to tee up something later. So I just wanted to add those in.
Let staff answer that.
Councilmember Barksdale, maybe I'll jump in here. I think as you're talking about inclusivity and physical spaces and design, there's probably a number of ways we can bring that back to you. So you're being asked tonight to look at the physical design, which gets embedded into the land use code for implementation. The concept I think you're driving to is how do we make the city feel more inclusive? And a lot of that has to do not just with some of the physical design, which creates the rooms that you heard about from our staff, but also how they'll be programmed and the types of events that will bring in as many different types of people as possible. And so we can work on bringing that back to you as as part of the placemaking strategy that we have through our Cultural and Economic Development Division within the department. And possibly through some of the DEI work too, we can work with the City Manager's Office.
That'd be perfect. I think the art was also another point, so I don't know if there's a tie in there as well. Thank you.
Great. Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. So just to be clear, if we give direction to move ahead tonight, this will come back just with the land use code amendments as proposed, or unless Council amends them and will pass them. Is that the?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay, so I I'm supportive of this work. I'm glad to see it move ahead. So, you know, I I think the Planning Commission's done a really good job with the help of staff to come up with a good plan. I do have some questions that I'd like to have addressed either tonight or in writing to the Council or at the next meeting. And that is, the BDA had a very detailed letter with regard to the code suggestions. And they shared some concerns, particularly around paver standards, topography, ADA compliance, et cetera. And then they had some comments about code clarity. So could I, could we get a response to that? I unfortunately only saw this letter when Mr. Jack came and testified. It somehow slipped under my radar. And so I didn't have a chance to really dive deep into it. But would staff be able to respond just to let Council know if these issues have been addressed, how they're going to be addressed, et cetera?
Absolutely. We'd be happy to respond to that and provide provide a response to Council. We did go through the letter and we felt comfortable that we had addressed most of those issues, so we'd be happy to pass that on.
That'd be great. Yeah. So is there any issue, I guess, maybe I should raise? If you feel like they're all addressed, are there any issues that they've raised that are still outstanding?
I think the outstanding issue is one that we aren't going to solve through the code amendment. And that's really how we do integrate these different pieces that are not up for redevelopment right to right now. So those pieces that are existing developments and how those end up through, I think the Matt Jack had mentioned something about public-private partnerships. Some of those things really haven't been resolved. But in terms of the code issues, I think there was a little clarification that they were looking for in some of the terms in the code. But there was nothing that was a real surprise or concerning, at least when we looked at it from staff perspective.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, this is very exciting. I'm just thinking back to my first year on council in two thousand and twelve, going to Denver. And the Grand Connection concept had been around for some time in council. It's amazing how long we've been talking about this, but we've made tremendous strides. And it's, this is, I really appreciated seeing all of this laid out. Because I've had some people, you know, ask, well, what's going on with the Grand Connection? What's going on is a lot of work, and I really appreciate that. And we're, the vision we've had from the beginning, I think, has been been right on. And the work you've done has really elevated that and really put these connections together. I think it's just amazing. So I'm really, I'm happy with it. You know, we'll get into some of the details later, as as mentioned. And I do think that, and add on to Councilmember Robertson's comments, I thought it was interesting of the to think about. I know we've all looked at in some different ways, but the redevelopment potential and the the diversity, so to speak, in all the buildings that are here now are going to be here for a while, the buildings that aren't there, how do they all fit in? And to, actually, that's a lot of, I think, positive diversity. How do we integrate current buildings and help them get molded into it? Because it's easy to come in and say, we're going to do this bridge, we're going to do all these new things. So it's that, I I get the sense that you're talking about, how do you, how do you work them together and make them even a more colorful, even more exciting part of this whole piece? So I think that's that's really good. And I'm looking forward to, you know, implementing the things we've been talking about from every, every time BDA goes on a trip to another city. One of the things we look at is what what can we do on to add to the Grand Connection? And going to the last one, of course, to Dallas is, and and we've been working across on the Grand, Grand Connection itself for some time. And I think that's, that's really exciting to see that built in and and really, you know, the Council said, let's go forward on this. But integrating it into this whole piece. And it's going to not only provide a lot of walking and everything else, but it's going to tie us to the other part of Bellevue. And I think just reminding me of a movie called Crossing Delancey. And I think Crossing four oh five is going to be our Crossing Delancey. We're really spreading out, we're doing something that's really bringing this the larger city together. So I'm very excited about it and look forward to seeing how the Lucas, you know, how it's spelled out and everything. I'd really appreciate particularly the artistic, cultural pieces that are included in it. And that's very important because that's what's going to make it really exciting. So just a great job. You know, I, there was a lot of good work done several years ago. And then, of course, you get the concept in place, and then you've got to go figure out the details. And you've really done a tremendous job on that. Really applaud the staff and the and the foresight and the other pieces, getting the community itself really excited about this. So I think we're, we're going to do it. So what it comes down to, we're going to make the Grand Connection. And so this is a huge, huge step. So thank you very much. I'm looking forward to doing the, you know, the process and more detail work. But I think we're right on, right on target and going at a, at a good, hopefully more than just deliberate speed. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Newen House.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I would echo some of those previous comments, especially by Councilmember Stokes there. It is very exciting to get to this point. We are making great progress. And I really applaud the the work of staff and applaud the work of the Planning Commission for doing some great work and keep moving this forward. Couple of quick questions. And first one, in regards to outreach and engagement. So in terms of the Grand Connection stakeholders, you mentioned a few here in terms of the the BDA and then Transportation, Parks Board, et cetera. But what what other stakeholders were involved in this process to date?
Thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor. I am going to ask Christina Galant to respond. She has been very involved with that. Christina, can you respond to that?
Thank you, Liz. I can start. And Michael, I'd encourage you to jump in as well, having joined on a little later. So we mentioned some of those key stakeholders. We did, I know a lot of the property owners along the Grand Connection were engaged as well. Michael, other major groups that we can point to?
Yeah, so there's kind of right from the get go, one of the things that we tried to approach this from was not only is this about making sure that it does work internally with staff, who we do consider as stakeholders, our design review team alone. But then when it comes to the external community, one of the things we noticed right away was that there was an enormous amount of community involvement that went into the formation of the Framework Plan. So as we know, that was a multi-year effort. And one of the things that I think we all think is very important is the fact that just because the community shared something three years ago doesn't mean that it still isn't just as important today. And so that's one of those elements that we probably didn't mention during the briefing, but still was part of this thing. So we went through all the comments that we collected from the community members, whether it was talking about what type of character they want to see at Compass Plaza, what do they see it today, what do they want it to be tomorrow? They want it to be this kind of civic, open gathering space where there could be festivals and events. Where do they want this kind of green space to be? And so those kind of community-based comments were still really important because everything from how the Garden Hill, Garden Hill Climb area looks to be this kind of lush, you know, respite amidst this kind of urban experiences is based off of what we also heard from the residents in the area. So that's, so really, when it comes to it, I know it sounds like in the briefing, it was a matter of just kind of working with our developer and design teams, which was very essential for 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 many important reasons. But it still is also collecting and recognizing all the hard work and all the comments from our residents as well, just in the general community.
Great. Well, that's exactly what I was looking for. So thank you so much, Michael. Good answer. And then the the other question I have is is in regards to bicycles. Now, on some of the images here, there are no pictures of bikes. And if I remember correctly, I thought that was a piece of the plan to have this both a walkable and a bikeable Grand Connection. Is that still part of the plan? Or is that being somehow lessened in terms of importance? But I always recall that that was, that was a piece of this. So it, to me, it doesn't look like it's getting as much attention as I think it would, it would deserve.
Certainly, Deputy Mayor. That's a great question. We have tried to integrate both of the, you know, multiple mobility modes. And Emile King is probably our resident bicycle expert that can most, most handily answer this question for you. Emile?
Sure. So for for the sequence one area, we've been looking at bike connectivity and really a more of a low speed fitting in with the pedestrian in this area. So if you think of Old Bellevue going up through Downtown Park and on the Ped Corridor, it will be accommodating to wield users. There's also the notion of thinking more broadly about the overall downtown area where you might have higher speed bike connectivity on on areas like the Lake to Lake Trail on Main Street, as well as some of the other investments we've made on one hundred and eighth Avenue. So there's, there in the future, there'll be multiple ways for people to get around downtown on on bicycles, including on the the Grand Connection. In the future, as we look forward to going from the Civic Center area over to Wilburton and connecting to East Rail, clearly that's going to be, you know, forging new ground for that connection from the Transit Center, the Office Corridor over to the East Rail investment that's going in place.
Okay, great. Thank you, Emile.
Councilmember Sun.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, I love the, our vision and moving this forward, you know, the idea of practical placemaking or wayfinding and then place making, making it fun, and then the gathering and the connectedness of it and moving it forward. I appreciate the fact that we're looking at both design standards, requirements, as well as guidelines. I think that'll be really helpful as well. So I want to make sure I clearly understood, it looks like it is restricted driveway access. So along the corridor, there will not be driveways going in and out. So from a safety standpoint, it is, that's the intent. I think that's what I read in the documents. And then when I think about then the low-impact design features and and the stormwater features and sensory. So those are more guidelines of what we're looking for and not necessarily prescribed standards. And and then when I think about performances and vendor, is the expectation that we're going to have infrastructure and lighting so that if we do end up with performers that need electricity, for example, that there would be some of that built into the corridor? And and for micro mobility, I'm trying to understand a little bit more about how that might work. And then the transition and the financial scenarios. So I agree that we have the sequence one and two, but just trying to get a better sense for what's the, will, will you come back with another briefing about the financial scenario? Since this one is just about the design standards. Since this one is just about the design standards and, and guidelines? And yeah, I'm really excited about this part, but I did have a couple of those questions. And then on the universal design and accessibility. So the, the, the requirements are set up so that as we really look at this entire corridor, we are going to have the universal design throughout. So we're not, we don't have to try to add in ADA, it will be baked into the very design of this corridor. So those were a couple of the questions I have. Very excited about getting this going and all the work from the Planning Commission and staff and working with our stakeholders.
Thank you, Councilmembers. I will start on some of these and then I will have a few other people add in to your questions about LID. It is in fact a guideline. So it's something that we will be working to implement through the design review process. It is not a mandatory requirement and really anywhere in downtown. And a lot of that is because of how we're built out. But certainly there will be standards and there will be a, a strong desire. And when people are coming through design review process, we will be looking for, how are you meeting these guidelines? So that will be a big push for us. You also asked about the built-in lighting and such. With these open spaces, we do often have lighting to actually accommodate those types of things. So either lighting or electrical outlets in our large plazas, that sort of thing. We are trying to provide that so that people can actually start to activate these spaces in a different manner than maybe what we've been accustomed to in the past. So they're more flexible spaces that can accommodate more uses, which is, I think, exciting. You also asked about the universal design and accessibility. And yes, the idea is that it does become more of the holistic design, the accessibility. Instead of a, just a ramp off to the side, it, we're trying, we're looking for that being brought into the design and becoming a part of the larger design so that it does not appear to be a secondary access or secondary route, but it's part of the route through a space and allows people to have a, everyone shares the same access to this wonderful space. I am going to ask Emile to speak a little bit about the micro mobility and the driveways, if you could do that.
Sure. So the, the micro mobility is a good question because right now we do have city efforts, as you know, that are thinking about micro mobility throughout all of downtown. So we have staff from Community Development, Development Services on those staff teams, kind of thinking about how the Grand Connection does fit into, into those efforts. Clearly, there's, there's desire lines that go throughout downtown for micro mobility, but oftentimes there may be, you know, design considerations or other constraints we want to just be aware of when we're starting to make rules that make sense for Bellevue. As far as the, the restricted driveway access, that, that came up most often on, in the Plaza is Street section. So right by the Pacar property, the old California Pizza Kitchen area. So thinking of, you know, a high-volume pedestrian area, they're trying to minimize new curb cuts and driveway accesses off of the, what historically was the pedestrian border. So that's where most of the discussion was on, on that particular topic. Clearly, areas like Bellevue Way that do need access into developments, it could still happen in that area.
Thank you, Emile. And I think the last part of your question, Councilmembers on, was regarding transition and some financial considerations of, you know, any transition that's being done. Matt, would you be willing to take a stab at that?
Sure. I think I heard a couple of things in that question, Councilmembers on. So if I don't hit it quite on the head, please just let me know. We are coordinating a couple of different things from a capital investment standpoint. There are opportunities to partner with our Transportation Department on certain improvements in and around the downtown. And as the council has set priorities, particularly around things like the Grand Connection and its implementation, we look at our CIP budget about what could be implemented in the shorter term, for example, partnering in and around where we're seeing private investment like the Vulcan Buildings or the Amazon Buildings. The other thing that we are working on through our Economic Development Strategic Plan is a way to leverage any public investment along the lines of, for example, what you threw out there, Councilmembers on, will there be electricity? These are important things to think about because if we want to program the area in a meaningful way to accomplish some of the things that we're talking about with BDA, for example, we should be thinking about the necessary capital improvements along the route, particularly from the transit station down to the park. So at any rate, yes, the, the short answer is yes, we're looking at all those things. We don't have a suite or a package for you to, to be looking at here tonight. Because this, of course, is just the, the guidelines approval. But there's opportunities as those things come up, we can certainly point them out for you as well.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Benamir. Well, this is a great, great, grand vision. I mean, this has been on the books for the city for the last 30 years. Start out with pedestrian corridor. At that time, it just, you know, the, the northeast six all the way connected from downtown, from the waterfront, Little Barbe, downtown park, and throughout the middle corridors and to the transit center and then to 405. The purpose is to basically connect downtown to the east side, to the rest of Bellevue, which is unfortunately divided by 405. So I think this is a really a great realization of that grand vision. It's a lot of work that happened before. It's small pieces that takes place, that took place, has taken place, that's making things happen. Now, you know, I think I commend you guys, staff, putting all this big vision together and identifying many, many small pieces. But in the old days, you don't really have the resources, there's no connection to develop all those small pieces together. But now I think this is opportunity and I'm really glad that you are able to do that. And all the small pieces, the connector, but they are there. These are, to me, that, you know, that's great. So we have now a, a connected planned vision. And I believe that the thing I want to add is, I don't want to just stop at Wilberton, just over the east side. Because it's going to connect to Bell Record, it's going to continue to go. So I, so I, Bell Corridor is already a jam, already in place. So I don't want it to close it. I want to, not just because you have a downtown, you have a Wilberton, it's a close thing. No. I think it should be a continuous grand connection, grand vision to connect Bellevue together. And these are the pieces, these are the stepping stones, breaks we are laying in place. So I like that a lot. That's great. And we have that vision. But, you know, the detail, the devil is in the detail, I always say. A lot of things we talk about are the details. We can spend hours talking about it and Mayor's going to say, don't, shut up. So in some of the details, you know, is we need to have the human scale, the characters, the things we talk about, the questions being asked. You know, that's why we need to look at diversity, we need to get inclusion. How do we bring people together? That's the essence of a community, of a city Bellevue. You know, so I, I believe that we are putting in space, good job. But I would really like to make sure, you know, I'm glad to see that the diversity, diverse culture is already kind of being recognized. We need to be looking at past, looking at present and looking at the future. The past, we're looking at some Japanese recognition indigenous people. That's great. That's a good start. But I think we need to be even more recognizing what are the things we can recognize in the past. Because people that we, and the present, obviously it's important. The present has changed. And present is going to change in the future. But we need to be envisioning what's all that going to happen. We need to have a flexibility. We need to have open designs. We need to have details that's going to give us the global vision, global character, the, the human scale, the experience that we are now enjoying with the rich culture we have in Bellevue, with the immigrants, the newcomers, people of all, you know, backgrounds and workloads and all that. I think that's important to think, but it's got to be in the openness, in the not, in the, in the flexibility we provide, thinking about the detail, how do we design it? You know, including the transportation, which, you know, the, the WMA was talking about a lot, you know, this. And there are many cities in the world, global cities, give an example, Hong Kong. You know, they have ways to connect people, you know, they still do things like they did 100 years ago. But they changed it, they modified it to fit into the space, into the culture, into how people do things and make them work very well. Walking, bicycling. I think we need to consider all that. And to be provided in the space that we are designing now, so that they can be flexible to change. And we can learn from other countries, other folks, you know, that's the reason, the value. Like, you know, the Councilmember Stokes mentioned, you can take trips to the other cities and see how other people do it. But I think we should not limit to just this country. Because our people, our community now is from all over the world, it's global. So let's see how other people make things work and do it and enjoy the, the, the details, the, the, the human scale, the experiences. To do that, we need to be inclusive. We need to have diversity, ultimately bring people together. So I believe the stakeholders, the outreach, that needs to be very deliberate. That's got to be much more than we've done, you know, in the past. And it's going to take time, but these are the details we have to work on. So that's number one, let's not close it, let's keep it open, let's keep it connected. Now you were able to kind of downtown to Wilberton to east side, let's keep it going. And it doesn't just physically open, it's humanly open and humanly connected. And do not be closed, have it open, have it flexible and provide private-public partnership to accomplish it. So I like it a lot. I think there's a lot to be said, but devil is in the detail. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick here. I just really appreciate this. I'm really excited. Seems like a big step forward. I do appreciate, as Councilmember Zahn mentioned, the accessibility part of it. I like the way that's written. I love the sensitivity to making it inclusive for all abilities and not separate entrances or accessibilities for different people. Should be seamless. It's, it can be done really well. And I, I think Bellevue will just do an excellent job of doing that on this. It's a great opportunity. And it really is quite a remarkable connection, as Councilmember Lee said. I mean, you're going from the mountains to Sound Greenway, you're connecting to the East Trail, and then you're connecting to the Grand Connection. And it's just unbelievable interconnectedness of safe, protected routes for people on bikes and on foot. It's going to transform the city and I'm very excited. So thank you. I think we have a consensus here to move this forward. So Deputy Mayor, do you have a motion?
Certainly do. I move to direct staff to prepare the Grand Connection land use code amendment ordinance for final action at a future meeting.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. All right, we're going to take a break here till 8:05. We'll take a real quick break and we'll see you back here at 8:05, please. Next study session item.
Sure, Mayor. This, the next item is a smart.
I cannot hear you yet.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, it's me. Sorry.
Okay, you getting me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, this next, the last study session item in front of the council this evening is a Smart Cities Program Overview and Transportation Element Informational Update. And just by background, the Bellevue Smart Plan, City's Plan was approved by the council back in 2017 and was followed by the Bellevue Smart Mobility Plan in 2018, which focused on the five, the, the plan in 18 was focused on the five-year goals specific to transportation. The last Smart Cities update in front of the council was back on June 24th and 2019 and focused on the connectivity element. Joining us this evening is Andrew Singleoffice Director, who will be introducing the staff along with them tonight. This is an informational update and no formal direction is being requested by council this evening. With that, I'll hand it over to you, Andrew, for introductions and to kick off the presentation.
Okay, well, thank you, City Manager Miyaki, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse and the council for having us here tonight to provide an update about the transportation element of the Smart Cities Plan. We've got Chris Long, Daniel Li and Chris Iverson here tonight to highlight some of the projects that we've completed to support the safety, sustainability, efficiency and accessibility of our transportation system. And they will also touch upon two new initiatives that will begin this year. The first one will help the city to prepare for the eventual arrival of autonomous vehicles in Bellevue. And the second will better define how we can prioritize the limited use of our curb in urban centers. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
All right. Thank you, Andrew, and, and thank you, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse and council for having us back to talk about some of the exciting progress that we've made in the Bellevue Smart Plan and specifically the transportation update. Next slide, please. The, so as mentioned, this is for an informational-only presentation. And the presentation is going to cover three main topics today, shown here on the next slide. The first is a background on the Smart Cities Program. It's been a while since we've talked about it. We'll cover a little bit about where, how we've gotten to where we are today. An update on the Smart Mobility Plan and some of the new initiatives that we're kicking off in addition to some of the recent successes that we've had with that program. And then we're going to take another deeper dive into the Smart Mobility Plan and focus on the curb side and some pilots that we've done recently with some outside partners and future planning for how we're going to prioritize that curb space. So moving to the next slide, back in 2014, the city began its journey into becoming a smart city with the council's vision that stated that Bellevue should be a clean city with a clean, a smart city, excuse me, with a clean, high-quality environment and excellent and reliable infrastructure that supports our vibrant and growing city, including high-tech connectivity. And with that vision, we marched forward through to 2017, when the Bellevue Smart Plan was completed. And have now, across the various departments involved in that program, have made a lot of headway in improving our, our goals against our three outcomes that are identified here. And those were to improve livability, sustainability, sustainability and resiliency of the elements of the Smart City Program in, in support of our community. Next slide, please. So the, the program was divided into six elements. As we mentioned, connectivity was the last one that was here. And it focuses on improving communication services for residents and businesses. Transportation, what you'll hear more about today is how we move people safely and efficiently through the city. Public safety is, that section focused on integration of services and to improve our public safety and specifically from the fire perspective. On the, the water element is where our utilities departments worked on improving delivery of their water services and minimizing disruption. And then Buildings and Energy, which has been a, a major topic over the last year as the Environmental Stewardship Initiative was wrapping up, looking at system performance and resource conservation. So next slide. So specific to transportation, when the Smart Cities Plan was done in 2017, we picked up the ball and dove deeper into the transportation element, elements and completed the Smart Mobility Plan. And that was actually a rebranding of what before was known as our ITS Master Plan, which was completed in 2004. That plan, we had pretty much hit all the goals of that plan by the time we got to the, the Smart Cities development and came up with a whole new approach to what we were going to be looking to do over the next five years, starting back in 2018. So from here, I'm going to pass it on to Daniel, who will talk about some of the accomplishments and next steps in that program. Go ahead, Daniel.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse and City Council. As a first order, before touching on several of the Smart Mobility projects tonight, I just want to remind everybody about our Smart Mobility Vision that we developed in 2018 as part of the Smart Mobility Plan. It really sets the framework for all the projects that we take on. It's the foundation of all the goals that we hope to, hope and strive to accomplish within this program. That vision is to use innovation and partnerships to deploy emerging technologies that enhance safety, sustainability, efficiency. that enhance safety, sustainability, efficiency and accessibility of Bellevue's transportation system. The key to this vision are really these four key words, safety, sustainability, efficiency and accessibility. These are common themes that are demonstrated throughout the various projects that we take on. And as we embark on future projects as well, it really underscores sort of the importance of taking or deploying new technology for a purpose. So the very first project that I would like to highlight tonight is our traffic camera expansion project. This is a project that has taken several years for us because it was a fairly sizable deployment of cameras across the city. But I'm pleased to say that we're near one hundred percent camera coverage across all our signalized intersections across the city. It's, it's really a game-changing technology for us because it improves our situational awareness around the city. We have a lot of eyes on the streets now, so we can see traffic conditions, see traffic flows, be able to share this resource with other departments as well. For example, we share it with parks so they can see some of the streams in the city. We also share it with other business partners within Bellevue as well so that they can develop video analytics technology that helps us look at certain metrics, like performance metrics, turning movement counts at intersections so we can understand operations a little bit better. It's been a key to our traffic management toolbox so we can be able to see traffic conditions during peak hours and make adjustments as needed. The public has also come to experience this new technology that we have through one of the projects that I'll highlight in one of the coming slides here as well. So definitely a tool that we've been able to implement to provide some efficiency, both from what we can do in terms of tweaking the system as well as providing a tool for the public. The next project that I'd like to focus on is our Winter Response Fleet Automatic Vehicle Locator Project. This is a tool that we implemented this year in response to the two thousand twenty-one winter snow event. We were able to implement this tool to really look at real-time locations of assets in the city, our snow, winter weather response assets. So our sanders, our plows, we're able to look at that in real time, ultimately increased our operational efficiencies and also improved response time dot, or it also improved event documentation for us as well. One good story to report back on here is that this year, we were notified of an event where one of the houses in Bellevue needed aid. So in that response effort, we were able to look at this tool and guide that aid car to the right location. We were able to see in the tool that it made a wrong turn and quickly were able to respond back and tell the driver that they needed to make a turn to the right instead of a turn to the left. The next project here is our Fiber Optic Inventory Project. This was an interdepartmental partnership that we embarked on with our IT department. It was, it's a new tool that allows us to document our thousands of miles of fiber in the city that we operate our transportation system off of, Bellevue Parks facilities off of, and we share with other partners such as Overlake Hospital, Bellevue School District and other IT facilities as well. By implementing this tool, we now have a better understanding of where our assets are. We're able to improve outage response times and it also creates an opportunity for us to share fiber with other partners within the region. One good story to kind of share here is about a year ago, we, there was a, a big outage in terms of a fiber line being cut just south of the city of Bellevue in Newcastle. This was a shared fiber line that is common to city of Bellevue, city of Renton, city of Newcastle, King County. We were quickly able to look at this tool and find a diversionary route to be able to reestablish that connection in short order. So this was a good partnership for us to offer a new tool to our surrounding partners. And then we implemented our live video traffic map. This is a new tool that we launched in fall of two thousand twenty. As I mentioned earlier in one of my, the camera slides, by enabling new cameras in the city, we're also able to provide live streaming video to the public. You might have noticed in October of two thousand twenty, the still imagery on our website changed over to live video streams. Ultimately, this improves real-time traffic visibility for the public. They're able to see traffic conditions in real time and be able to make informed decisions about where to make their trips and travel around the city. It was a, a good sort of high, project or point to highlight here is that during the two thousand twenty-one winter event that happened on February thirteenth of this year, we were able to see traffic, web traffic on our website, go up from about one hundred and fifty users a day to about five thousand users a day after implementing this new tool. So it was quickly evidenced to us that the public has relies on these tools. They look at the live traffic video to make decisions about whether to make a trip or not out in this winter condition and whether it's safe enough to do so. So we believe that it greatly improves safety in those instances. And then our autonomous vehicle strategic vision. This is a project that we're about to take on this year. It will be supported by the consultants on our new mobility on-call. The new mobility on-call will encompass various technology, emerging technologies in the connected autonomous, electric and shared space. But this body of work specifically looks at sort of autonomous vehicles in the city of Bellevue. It's slated to begin in quarter two of this year. We'll be evaluating all the industry and agency or industry and A, agency AV readiness in Bellevue. There's a lot of local partners within city of Bellevue that are excited about AV that want to partner with the city of Bellevue on AV. So we will take this opportunity to invite them, put, bring them to the table so they can help inform and help guide us as we look at readiness and what, what might be the next steps in AV technology. And then our travel time data platform. So as part of this project, it, it really hits on using data to help inform our practices as a traffic operations group. It provides us data points in terms of travel time along key corridors in the city, of which we set up eighty key corridors to monitor. We can look at seasonal trends and also monthly trends between travel times so we can proactively use data to inform whether adjustments need to be made along a corridor, how to prioritize projects according to growth or according to changes that we see related to travel patterns. And ultimately, we can use this tool to make our adaptive system in the city even more adaptive and even more responsive to the demand that we see. So we're excited about this project. We just implemented it. We have about two months collected and we still have the year ahead to look at this data. And lastly here, I would like to touch on an exciting project that I, that I'm co-managing with Franz Lowenherz at the city of Bellevue as well. It's called the Crossroads Connect Project, which is a micro-mobility project, providing micro-transit for residents of East Bellevue. We implemented this project in Q three of two thousand twenty in October and we've been operating it since. So for a total of eight months so far. Essentially, it's an on-demand transit project that provides door-to-door service through the van that you see on this slide. We'll pick up a passenger from their home and take them to the frequent transit network stops, being the B-line and also the Eastgate Transit Center. Everything is enabled through a mobile app and everything is, so all the information is there. The rider can see in real time where the vehicle is. And as it approaches, the experience is very much like an Uber or Lyft. This project was made possible through a grant that we received through WashDOT, a three hundred ninety-four thousand dollar grant, of which we partnered with King County Metro, a nonprofit Hope Link and also Spare Labs, the technology provider, to enable this service in East Bellevue. It's exciting to also note that we recently launched rides to local vaccination sites in response to COVID. Since implementing this new service, we've seen tremendous uptake in the ridership. We've seen the demographics that we intended to provide the service to being low-income households, households with lower car ownership, really impress upon the service and they've been taking the service as a norm in their, in being able to get to these sites. As of March or between March and April, we saw a fifty percent growth in terms of the disadvantaged community using the service. So we were, we were very excited to see that. Month-on-month, this service has also grown in ridership as well. We've seen increases in the last two months of twenty to twenty-five percent ridership as more people get vaccinated and more people find the need to move around and travel in Bellevue. So we're excited to continue seeing this project go, continue to grow. This project will continue all the way until August, of which we'll continue to seek more funding to extend the pilot if possible. So with that, I'll turn it over to curbside management where Chris Iverson will share more about our endeavors there.
Great. Thank you, Daniel. Good evening, City Manager Miyaki, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse and members of council. My name's Chris Iverson and I'm happy to present a, a small segment of what is in our, our Smart Mobility Plan, which is related to curbside management. And what I mean by curb management is generally the nexus of land use and transportation. This area is the, the border of a street that essentially acts as the intermediary between transportation and the place that transportation interacts with. It truly is where movement meets access. This, this very otherwise static location where historically speaking, you know, on-street parking and, and vehicle movement has occurred, has really become a much more dynamic space in the last ten years especially with the rise of rideshare companies like Uber and Lyft, with the rise of e-commerce, especially during the COVID era. And obviously, you know, the, the traditional needs of, of transit and private employer shuttle usage. So curb management is becoming a much more important topic when we think about mobility solutions and how we can ensure a safe and efficient transportation system. I'm gonna go to the next page, please. So I would like to highlight two different projects that tie very well with our smart mobility vision of using technology to advance the state of the art in transportation. One project is actually a, a grant opportunity from the Department of Energy that was, that was issued in January two thousand nineteen. The, the leading organization there is the University of Washington's Urban Freight Lab. So the city of Bellevue partnered with the city Seattle and Pacific Northwest National Lab. And in working on this grant project, the intent of that grant was to attempt to find solutions that reduce fuel consumption from freight vehicles by making deliveries more efficient, specifically in urban areas where you generally see freight trucks operate and maybe circle blocks to find safe and, and efficient places to, to pull over and make their delivery. The other opportunity was the Smart Cities Collaborative. Now, this was an opportunity that the city applied for in late two thousand nineteen. This, this brain trust was issued from an organization called Transportation for America, which is a DC-based advocacy organization that pushes for transportation funding at, at federal and state levels. Back in two thousand nineteen, the, the Smart Cities Collaborative was focused on curbside pilot projects. And Bellevue was selected along with Boston and Minneapolis as the three pilot cities where those curb pilots were to take place. So it was a really exciting opportunity, Bellevue obviously being the only mid-sized city in, in the midst there as a pilot city with the intent of, of looking into curbside technologies that would make the, the overall curb environment more safe and efficient. Next slide, please. So first, I'd like to dive into the, the first grant opportunity that I had mentioned with the Department of Energy. Again, this was something that we partnered with the Urban Freight Lab. The intent was to launch systems that could predict load zone availability and reduce parking-seeking behavior from freight vehicles. So we launched multiple different camera systems around downtown Bellevue in, in high-demand areas where we noticed a lot of freight and e-commerce activity. And with the observations from those cameras, we're able to feed into a, an app actually that is being developed by the Pacific Northwest National Lab, which hopefully will be able to be used by freight companies like UPS, FedEx and Amazon in the future. It'll allow those drivers to have a better sense of the demands of the curb at specific times of day and specific days of the week. So it is really exciting. It's been a really exciting cooperative effort with both the city Seattle and with the University of Washington. Next slide, please. So the, when we were launching the Smart Cities Collaborative, you know, again, I mentioned before that the intent originally pre-COVID was to have the three cities launch curbside pilots. When COVID took over and our, and our lives changed, the, the consortium made the decision to sort of pivot the scope of our, of our brain trust and really focus on near-term urgencies related to COVID. That did not deter us. Obviously, we did a lot of COVID-related activities, which I'll touch on later. But we decided to continue to pursue a, a curbside performance assessment. And what this looked like was we actually worked with multiple different vendors that had camera solutions that were able to, or that, that were marketing the ability to track the, the arrival and departure events at the curb. So there ended up being five total vendor systems. And what we did is we mounted ground-truth cameras where we actually had people behind the scenes monitoring and comparing the outputs from the vendor cameras to see just how accurate these systems are. So it was, it really was a validation of the technology that we were working with our private partners on. Right now, we're actually in the midst of our last assessment period and I'm excited to say that our final report of our findings is, should be available in a few months later this summer. Next slide, please. Like I mentioned before, the Smart Cities Collaborative was a really great opportunity for our transportation staff to work with many different minds from dozens of cities around the country. And when COVID hit, again, I mentioned before, the scope of that brain trust pivoted and we really used, we used that resource as, as a, ideas bouncing ground of sorts. So the, the two main products that came from the Smart Cities Collaborative were the COVID and the Curb Report, which documented the multiple different efforts that cities did during COVID to address the crisis. And then another document that, that covered the universal curb language and standards principles. So the, the COVID and the Curb Report covered a lot of the different things that cities did. Like I mentioned, in Bellevue, what that included was launching food pickup zones at the onset of the pandemic and launching our curbside dining program in Old Bellevue. We also launched our Healthy Streets Program in multiple different neighborhoods, which closed the street to local, or closed the street to through traffic to allow more people to maneuver and safely physically distance at the, the peak of the pandemic. The, the, sorry, could you go back one second? I'm gonna mention the, the curb language and standards principles. This document highlighted really five main takeaways related to the curb. The, and again, this was a, this was a collaborative effort that the cities in the collaborative worked on together. The five main takeaways were that, that the future of the curb should really be in control by local public agencies and public agencies should set the policy. The curbside access should also be equitable. We want to make sure that people from, you know, all backgrounds are able to access the curb and there's not prioritization that, that pushes them away. The, the data that is derived from the curb and from these pilot programs that we're launching should be open and publicly owned so that the, the state of the practice can, can continue for the public good. And the last two is that the, the data should be easily transferable and clearly communicated so that when we are evolving new curbside practices and testing new technologies, we're able to be speaking the same language. That was something that we realized is that around the country, the idea of curb management is still very nascent and ensuring that we have consistent language is gonna be really important from a practitioner standpoint. We can go to the next slide. So just like to touch briefly on some upcoming work. Like I mentioned before, the, the performance assessment report should be complete and published later this summer. That will show the findings from our curbside pilot. After that pilot, we still intend on, on testing different technologies to see if there's better ways that we can make the curbside and our general transportation system more efficient, especially in our dense areas like downtown. And finally, the, we will be launching a, a curbside. And finally, we will be launching a curbside management plan effort later in 2021 that will take a look at the curbside from both a policy and a principles perspective. So this is something that the city has been interested in for a while now. And we're really excited to get that work going here very shortly. We're in pre-scoping phase right now. And we intend to be pursuing that project in full speed here shortly. So with that, I will pass it back to Chris. Thank you.
Yeah, just to wrap up, back on the smart cities topic. In, over the course of the year, there will be a few more updates from other departments on where they're at with their smart cities elements, all leading up to what we're calling a light update to the Bellevue Smart Plan in 2022. And with that, we'll open it up with any questions.
Terrific. Thank you. Great presentation. Councilmember Lee, we're going to start with you because I know this is your favorite topic. And we'll go to councilmembers Zahn, Robertson, Barksdale, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, Stokes, and myself. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make it very brief, very short. I'm very impressed. This is exciting. I'm just like a kid in the candy shop, I guess, a toy store. You know, it's just wonderful to see fundamentally, you know, it starts with very simple IT. In the old days, IT is trying to get synchronized, signalize, signalization, that's IT. But Bellevue has been just amazing. I would say the management, you know, and the council, we invested heavily in fiber infrastructure. We're developing all that stuff. And now we have 100% intersection with cameras. Amazing. I mean, these are information data, which we are talking about today and the future technology. And how many cities can say that they have the technology we have? You know, so we're just blessed, we're endowed. So thank you for the staff that realizing this and keep on investing in the people and in the technology, in the infrastructure. So I am really excited. And I think this COVID-19 really showed the technology is a very important piece of the new norm. You know, we're talking about all the things, how do we make it safer, more efficient, and more environmentally friendly, and all the good things we're talking about. We're talking about more people, smaller space. So I don't need to go through all that stuff because, you know, I'm really, I want to compliment all the way from the top down to the bottom. And thank you. And I think it's self-evident that we can learn more from you guys. And so I have just emphasized one thing. What you have done, you know, we sometimes, we keep it a little bit too tight to the chest. A lot of private sectors, partners are looking for a very strong, credible, innovative, creative government, you know, to partner with. And because it's hard, it's very difficult to come by, you know, this kind of creativity, innovation from a governmental organization. When they see that, what we are concerned is, how do we keep them away? But I think that's a good thing to be in, good place to be in. And I think we can indeed live our reputation as the technology center and hub of the future. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, I want to say thank you, Daniel, Chris, and Chris. This has been an amazing presentation. And, you know, smart cities is so important. And I think this is a testament to why we continue to win the Digital Cities Award is for this work that has been really 17 years in the making, as I understand it. And, you know, certainly in our retreat, we talked a lot about how we focus on data and how we use data to make decisions. So the fact that what I heard is that we are making our data available both internally to the city as well as to the general public, as well as our business and our partners. So the ability to make real-time decisions will be the piece that's going to help us to maximize our transportation infrastructure, our curb space. I'm super excited about the curb curb management and the work that you're doing there. Because that was several years in the making. And the fact that you managed to do that with grant funding so that we're really maximizing the money from other partners is tremendous. And I guess my question would be this. In the retreat, we also added innovation, sustainability, and equity as three additional values that we have. So as we think about those, I'm wondering, as we look at our at our plan moving forward and you think about the equity elements, are there certain parts of the city that we need to also give it more attention related to technology and innovation? And what might some of those be? And then in terms of engagement with the community and the equity lens of who are the folks that some of this technology has not benefited yet that we can also focus on? So maybe it's both geography in terms of the infrastructure as well as the diversity of the people and the ones that may be more underserved in our community that we can focus on. So those were my couple of comments. And then really, how can we move even faster? Are there other partners that we can find? And do we have adequate funding for this? And do we need to consider more funding to help you? Thanks.
Yeah, well, sure. It's, we can always use more funding. There's just a lot to do and a lot to consider. But I think we're doing pretty well with what we've seen through the levy and through our reoccurring capital budget that we've had for a while. We've been able to leverage some of the money that was set aside just for partnerships to do a lot of these neat projects like the Crossroads Connect, which, you know, the purpose of that project was to do exactly what you said, to reach some of those neighborhoods and those people that maybe haven't been touched by this, by the tech, mobility technology yet. And as Daniel reported with some of the recent findings, I think we're accomplishing that. And so we're anxious to see more money potentially come from the state to support it a little longer or hopefully to the end of the year. But we know we're going to be able to go until August, at least, to see how it evolves in potentially a less COVID-impacted commuter environment and see how it's used more for that, not just some of the daily trips that people need to take for other purposes. So, you know, as we get into this AV mobility study and the curb space management, there's going to be new needs and asks on those fronts. And so we'll use those to define some of the projects and where we can go. But we certainly are looking for partnerships in both. I think there's a lot that can be accomplished through that in advancing those technologies and plans.
Yeah, and hopefully at the federal level, some of the jobs plan, I believe, does include some potential pieces that we may be able to leverage if it ever moves forward and passes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. This has been one of the best council meetings in terms of study session items. The theme tonight seems to be connectivity and quality of life for our people because the Grand Connection and the Smart Cities for Tech both really accomplished that. And, you know, I'm so excited about the smart cities. I remember when we, before we adopted smart cities, we did the adaptive traffic lights. And we started moving more people on our roads. It was almost like adding another lane in many places. And so, and then we adopted the smart mobility and their small smart city plan, which was the transportation. And it really is so great because with transportation, you can't necessarily build yourself out of the challenges to come with a growing city. Yeah, you could add more pavement, but there's only so much land. Get people to switch modes, or you can make how they use the pavement much more effective. And this technology that we're using here is letting people use the pavement that we have much more effectively. Hopefully, we can move more people, use those curbs better. It's just great. And I'm so proud of the city and the staff and the council with regard to how much we've embraced the future, we've embraced the technology. And we're not really just building for the city, we are, we're building for the vision of the city that is yet to come. And so this just ties into that so beautifully. So I just wanted to just, you know, get out my pom poms and cheer for the presentation night because it's just so exciting. So the one comment I have is on the curbside management plan. That was something we prioritized in the last budget. It says it's starting late 2021. I know that that's going to lead to us adopting new policies. Ultimately, as properties develop, it may affect how the properties develop in the downtown or other very dense areas. So how do we see the end game as far as the timing for the curbside management plan and implementation there?
Well, we're anticipating starting it by the end of the year. We have to get the consultant contract going and completing it in 2022. And basically, it's a set of guiding principles that will help us prioritize what happens on the curb. So due to staff resource issues, that's the sequencing of it. But we can get into it in earnest in early 2022.
Great, because yeah, I'm very eager to get going on that. I think it's going to be a really important thing as we densify to use that curb space. And as everything's changing with the rideshare and everything else. So well done. Keep on going. So really, really excited. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Barksdale.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody. I mean, I think most councilmembers have already addressed my points there. I would just say, one of the things I'm really excited about with curbside management, hopefully as part of it is more opportunities for tactical urbanism. You know, I know we saw that during COVID with the outdoor restaurant eating. Would love to see, you know, other scenarios that are accounted for in that curbside management plan. And then if I heard you correctly, the data will be available from this work. Is that right? Maybe on our open data portal, which is awesome. And then on the Crossroads Connect or any other apps that support transportation, curious if there's a way to include something sustainability-related so people know like, hey, you've contributed to reduce carbon emissions by this much. To sort of encourage them and helps us move, make progress in our environmental stewardship plan in that way as well. And thank you.
Council, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. First, Chris Dale. Chris, thank you so much for the great presentation. I'll probably just echo a few of the comments made here by some of my colleagues. But great presentation, and especially, Daniel, I appreciate the numerous times you stopped to kind of provide real-world examples of how smart city implementation and technology really do help our residents. You know, especially the example of the aid car that took a wrong turn. These are things that can not only make our lives easier, but it can save lives. And I think that's really important for residents to understand and appreciate all the great work that we're doing at the city. And boy, there's just so much to love about this. And I agree with Councilmember Robertson, it's one of the better presentations that we've had. And because of the metrics, because of the data that you have provided here, and especially on the curbside management, really excited to get that going even further. Great update there. So thank you for that. I just want to drill down for a moment here on the Crossroads Connect Shuttle, which I think is a great pilot. It's, you know, it's kind of in my neck of the woods here in terms of Lake Hills, Crossroads area. It seems to be getting a lot of use. I wonder if you could drill down for me just a little bit and give me some metrics in terms of what are the goals that we're looking to accomplish in order to extend this pilot past August? And then have we thought about, if we're able to extend it past August, what other parts of the city could we take advantage of this program and implement it in other parts of the city?
Chris Long.
Yeah, I was going to pass it on to Daniel, so go ahead.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. So the project itself has a very comprehensive list of performance measures that we're tracking. In fact, because it is a state project, we are delivering to the state a performance monitoring report once the pilot phase completes in August. So we're looking at many metrics like number of trips that convert to frequent transit networks, number of people that we transport on the service. And we're looking at sort of the folks that use the low-income fare passes as well. So a lot of these metrics, you know, there's obviously, when we operate a type of service like this, a lot of times there's a focus on cost per trip and how many trips we're servicing per hour. Those are important metrics for us, but we're not looking at that in isolation in itself. We're looking at some of these equity metrics as well. And also, how many sustainability metrics as well? How many trips are we removing from SOV trips? And using these to sort of guide future decisions as we continue to advance the project? So those are, you know, we're very optimistic about future funding to continue moving this project along. To your question about, you know, if there is future funding, what does it mean for the project? You know, we're always looking at expanded areas in the project. In fact, this project actually started in a very small area that was localized and maybe even hyper-localized in the crossroads area. When we, as we were launching this service through COVID, we quickly found out that, you know, there was an opportunity to provide broader service to the whole East Bellevue area. So we quickly instill meet the service times that we committed to on the project. So within two months since implementing the service, we quickly expanded the service to capture everything that's bounded by 520, I-405, and I-90. So the entire East Bellevue area is covered through this service now, even though it's called Crossroads Connect still. So I think even beyond that, we're still going to be looking for more opportunities as well. There's conversations about future funding. Is there a partnership with Redmond as well to provide broader access across cities between Redmond and Bellevue? So these are things we're going to look at because we know that people certainly don't travel just within Bellevue. There's travel across the region as well, so we're going to be looking for those opportunities as well.
Fantastic. That's a great answer. I really appreciate the fact that you were able to pivot there and expand it to the entire East Bellevue area there, kind of locked in between those different highways there that you just mentioned. So great job. Thanks again for the presentation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, this has really been an amazing presentation. And I really appreciate the whole coordination and all. I agree with the Councilmember Robertson. I would, all too, was looking to pull out my pom poms and congratulate you on this. I think it's fascinating the way we move so quickly on this. I mean, these things seem to take a long time. But Chris Long, remember the ETP big conference we had, a couple of them on new technology? And we were, what our shiny toy at the time was our lights and those things. And, but I remember you talking, others really talked about the future of it. And we're doing it. And we do it. And it's just amazing how much we've really accelerated on that. So congratulations to Andrew and the crew on, you know, Chris, Chris and Daniel putting all this together. It's a lot of pieces. We kind of focused on this last part. You go back and look at all the other things we're working on. It's just amazing. So I think we're going to get much, much further than anybody thinks on this. I wondered, and Daniel brought this up. I assume we're doing some coordination with the cities around us. It is a region, you know, we're connected. I mean, when we drive from here, we go to another city, it's, they're very connected and everything else. And we've been doing that. And I assume this is the same thing we're doing here is working with these other, you know, with Redmond and Kirkland and others around us. Can, is that, to what extent on this particular, these particular projects have we done that?
Well, I will say on the upcoming AV strategic vision project that we will be engaging with the state and their autonomous vehicle working group. They were very excited to see us pursuing this project, as was Metro and the city of Seattle. And so we're looking to leverage those partners in those projects. When it came to the Snowplow project, we actually, we looked to our partners in Issaquah, who have been doing this for, I think this might have been their second winter that they did something similar. And we learned from what they had started and we're expanded it. We still have a ways to go. Theirs is already public-facing. It's a little less tech-heavy than ours is. I think ours is going to be a little more streamlined. But we're looking to, you know, we have a, I have, we have a coworker. we're looking to, you know, some, we have a, I have, we have a coworker in the department who lives on Cougar Mountain and he can decide whether to go off the mountain through Issaquah or off the mountain through Bellevue. And to come through Bellevue, I mean, he works in Bellevue. So and those are the types of decisions that we can now help people who live up there by getting that information out.
Yeah, that's great. The other thing I was wondering about is I assume we're really working and tying this into the light rail into BRT and when you get real BRT, I mean, all these different connectivity pieces. And as you've talked about, the private transportation. And we have so many different forms now of transportation, who's providing them? And again, you know, we have to manage the whole thing because it just, we can't compartmentalize what we have real jurisdiction over and what other people do and all that. So I assume that that's, that's a lot of your work you're doing that shows up in this, but not something you talk about specifically on this.
Right. I mean, that's a, it's a challenging part of what Chris is going to be leading with the curbside management plan is we have an ever increasing demand that once employees start returning to the downtown to accommodate employer shuttles in addition to transit and transit layover with the expansion of stride and or the addition of stride and the expansion of BRT coming to Bellevue. There's just even more needs to use curb space. So we need to get
Yeah, well, it's great. Sounds like we're on top of it, though, and that's, that's the important thing. So appreciate very much. A good, good, good presentation, good work and look forward to more of it.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a few questions. First of all, I was watching the setup on Main Street today with the, with the are those Jersey barriers or something? And it was just, it was such a good job that they were doing and those are so solid. And I was so proud to see the city of Bellevue trucks parked on the street, making this all happen for our local restaurants. What a wonderful way to support our economy. With the Crossroads Connect bus, it seems like this is what access is missing. You know, people with disabilities call access and they sit there for like a window of three hours. They go to where they have to go and then they call access and they have to sit another window of three hours. It makes it into just a really, really long day for them. And it seems like that technology that we're using, the Crossroads Connect, would be so fantastic for access. I wonder if we could try to share it with them a little bit with the county. That's just a thought. Another thing is when people hear about all the technology and the cameras, I get a lot of questions about privacy. I wonder if you could address people's privacy? And my last question is about autonomous vehicles and 5G. So I know we're installing a lot of 5G. I think we're doing it above ground. Are we, is that the, is that what we plan to do in the future or will it be below ground? I'm just, because I think we're planning for it to be below ground potentially as well. And I'm wondering what the reality is for our future. So just those two, the privacy and the 5G.
So I'll tackle the 5G question first and then I'll pass it on to Daniel to talk about privacy and the shuttles and accessibility. So right now with 5G, our primary focus has been working with the carriers to get their equipment deployed on our streetlight poles. And that's something we're obligated to do through the FCC. And we've been working very hard on that to make that happen. And so that is going to provide not only a benefit to the community at large, but potentially to mobility and safety. Because it's looked at being the foundation for connected vehicles in the future. So that, I'm not sure about an underground component, other than some of their backhaul communications is all based on fiber optics. And there, that's been an ongoing project for them to get that installed for a while. And some of it is also partnered with us. So maybe Daniel, you could jump in on the other two questions.
Sure.
The other question was actually about the intersection cameras and the curb cameras and privacy.
Yes.
Yeah. So with the intersection cameras and privacy, all the technology that we deploy is very much, you know, no recognition of any features that can pinpoint it back to one person. In fact, we, when we deployed the cameras, we and we serve it up on our website, we specifically choose views that do not look into any residential areas. We make sure we vet the views and we, in some instances, there are, there's masking that's applied as well in certain areas so that we can make sure that privacy is up kept in the most, as much as we, or basically maximize the amount of privacy that's provided. With curb management, the same philosophy is true as well. All the technology that we deploy, any AI technology that's onboard these systems have no ability to track or look at any recognition of any features that can be pinpointed back to a certain person or a certain vehicle. So that's one of the underlying requirements that we made as mandatory when we engaged with the vendors that are involved in our project. If they were not able to accomplish or meet that goal, then they were excluded from the project itself. Related to the shuttles, the point about
I didn't, I didn't actually ask that. That wasn't my question. So it's okay. You don't have to answer about shuttles. Unless you're answering about sharing it with access.
Yeah, I was going to mention because we are already doing that. Yeah. So our project, yeah, our project, one of the features of it, I didn't mention in the presentation, but we have a feature that's basically co-mingles services. So we actually do provide access transit trips. So whenever there's an access transit trip that comes in, it is actually prioritized within Crossroads Connect. So those trips actually qualify for a point to point trip. They don't need to go to the Beeline stops or East Gate. So in fact, the picture that we shared in the presentation today is one of the riders within the service area that frequently takes that service to get to Overlake Medical Center for her doctor visit. So it is one of those, it's built into the service as one of the features that we currently implement.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much for that information. Well, great presentation. We really enjoyed it. Thank you very much. We have one more thing which we added to our agenda and that's a motion to approve a resolution. Deputy Mayor, or do we need to introduce this, Mr. Miyake?
Mayor, I could certainly go ahead and introduce this. For a quick staff report, I would turn this over to Kathy Gerlars, City Attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miyake. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Proposed Resolution 9943 is before you tonight. That resolution would authorize the funding and hiring of outside counsel for the East Bellevue Community Council. So just to give some brief background, on April 26, the city council adopted ordinance 6575, which established some minimum parking, residential parking requirements for certain housing developments in areas with frequent transit service. That ordinance is by law within the jurisdiction of the East Bellevue Community Council to review and approve or disapprove as to the property that is within the geographic scope of the community council. At its May 4 meeting, the EBCC voted to disapprove the ordinance. Some of what is in that ordinance, however, is required by the Growth Management Act. The city, the Bellevue City Attorney's Office normally represents both the EBCC and the city. However, there's now a conflict of interest between the EBCC and the city, such that the city attorney's office can no longer represent both. The EBCC is now in need of separate legal counsel to advise it with respect to this matter. Resolution 9943 would authorize the city attorney to hire outside counsel separately for the EBCC in a sum not to exceed $40,000. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 9943?
I move to adopt Resolution 9943, finding that the cost for legal counsel for the East Bellevue Community Council concerning the community council's disapproval of ordinance 6575 are necessary expenses of the community council and shall be budgeted and paid for by the city in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Is there any comments or questions on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Okay, that is the end of our meeting. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.